I'm Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is April 25, 2023, and it's 7:03 PM. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Abu Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury.
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yeah, present.
Councilman Rafai is not president. Councilman Hassan not present. And Mr. Mayor is present. We have four.
All right, thank you. Let's try this one for the community announcements. I'm glad you're just ready to go back to the committee. Do we have any community announcements?
Mr. Mayor, I have a few uploaded on board docs. Of course, it's not loading. We have a merchants meeting coming up. It'll be on May 11 from 7 to 9 PM. It's going to be held at the Hamtramck Historical Museum. There will be flyers on the website, on social media, and we got a couple out here on the table, if anyone wants to grab them. There is a SEMCOG invite here, and my computer is loading slowly, to participate in public participation plan. Southeast Michigan Council of Government seeks to enhance decision-making by providing leadership and consensus building on key plans and policies. Basically, SEMCOG is looking for public input, if anyone's interested in that. I won't read the whole thing. And then, obviously, we're also doing KNIF. We should have some intermittent waters, water going on and off out there. John, is there anything coming up specifically?
There are just about four sections. They're given us over the next two weeks, there's going to be a PR shutdown. But they are notifying the residents.
Okay. So that's all we have for the community announcements.
All right. The principal of KNIF Academy was complaining to me that he did not receive a notice before.
And we addressed that.
All right. Any more announcements?
He's working on KNIF between Conant and Buffalo. When we start working there, they're going to be cement or ash for?
I believe that's cement.
Cement, good. All right.
Uh, what's that?
Fireman's March. Fireman's March.
Oh, uh, well, go ahead.
Okay. I was going to say little details are in my head. So we have the weekend of May 6, which is a Saturday, is the Strawberry Festival at St. Florian's, and the Fireman's March will take place. I believe it starts at 3 o'clock from the firehouse. They will be marching down Brombeck to St. Florian's Church, and everyone is welcome to attend. And we'll have officers there guiding them with trap.
Thank you.
Are your chief Bozy one?
Yes, he does.
All right. Proclaimations, recognitions, and presentations. Any non-death?
No.
Any addition or additions to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right. Public comments, do you have any?
No public comments, sir.
Oh, that's the first time.
She's heavy.
Does my smile say it all? I love public comment, what are we talking about?
All right. Even Len is not here.
She asked for one minute, though, so.
They're going to come, but maybe late.
We reserve her spot.
Okay. So I think Len, Nasir are running. They're going to be here if they win?
Yeah, maybe.
And I don't think, not anymore.
You don't know?
Oh, we need the mayor to run.
Is he, right?
No. I'm saying those are public comments. That should, if those three become candidates.
That's right, yeah.
All right. Consent agenda, and we have approval of minutes from the April 11, 2023, regular city council meeting. Be approved of invoice register date ending April 25, 2023. Be approved expenditure date ending April 25, 2023. The resolution 2023-55 approving request for street closure for St. Florian's Strawberry Festival. The resolution 2023-56 approving appointment to Human Relations Commission. Can I give a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No.
All right. So we have a public hearing. We have resolution 2023-30 adopting a final project planning document for drinking water and wastewater system improvement, and designates an authorized project to present.
Make a motion.
One second.
Mr. Mayor, Tiffany's here at Tennessee. She did give a presentation on this prior, but it's been a while now. Maybe she can just give a quick update on what we're doing here.
Yeah, so this is the project plan. Obviously, I got to go through and hit certain things with presentation per Eagle requirements. But this is for SRF funding for 2024, and we have projects in there for drinking water and clean water. So the clean water, the big one, is that sewer relief 1B. But we'll cover that under the presentation. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Good day, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, residents of Hamtramck. I'm Tiffany DeBide with Tennessee Engineers. We'll be covering the clean water and drinking water revolving fund project plan as part of the project plan requirement. So as you can see here, we'll go over the drinking water SRF and clean water SRF loan program to include the overview of both programs, the drinking water, quality problems to be addressed, clean water, quality problems to be addressed, project plan timeline, the scope for both, as well as the cost and the social and environmental impacts. So the DWF loan program is a low-interest loan through Eagle. Typically, it's 20 years at a 1.875% interest. The city of Hamtramck qualifies for overburden status, so that will make you eligible also if you wish to do so, a 30-year loan at that 1.875 normally. That's not required, however, it is an option. The clean water plan must be submitted by May 1, drinking water by June 1, but since we're doing one combined project plan, we're held to that May 1 submittal date. So clean water will assist with, sorry. So clean water, yeah. Clean, we're going to that one. I think I have it on this side. Yeah, sorry. The clean water loan program also is a low-interest loan through Eagle, typically 20 years. Last year was down to the 1.875. Also, again, you guys will qualify for the overburden status. You're eligible to do the 30-year loan, so same as the clean water, or same as the drinking water. And like I said earlier, the project plan is due by May 1, 2023, to be considered for the 2024 fiscal year plan. So drinking water, quality problems to be addressed. The big one is lead and copper rule that was amended and adapted in 2018 by Eagle. Obviously, requiring that all lead and galvanized service lines must be replaced from the main to the meter, 18 inches inside the former building. So the DWRs, additional things that we're looking at doing, so as you, like I said, with the lead service lines, Hamtramck currently, we're at that 7% service line replacement period, so 366 service lines need to be replaced each year because of a lead exceedance level. So we'll continue to do additional water sampling as required. And then, we're also putting in for the additional preliminary inventory water services that need to be completed. So we're in the process of completing the first step. I think it's like 1/3 that was covered under the DWM grant, and we're going for the additional funding for, to complete out that requirement that's due by 2025. For water main replacement in the city, as you're aware, most of the water in our city is close to 100 years old. So the water main typically has a useful life of about 75 years. Obviously, we're well beyond that. Much as the city has built up, I really want you to focus in on that pitcher to the left. That was actually a pipe from the city that, when an emergency break happened, that's the kind of buildup that we're seeing inside the pipes in the city of Hamtramck. And that's why it's critical to sit there and try and really do this 3% of water main replacement per year that we're trying to complete. As far as clean water, problems to be addressed, the sanitary sewers were installed in the early 1900s as well. Our main sewers run along Joseph Campo. These sewers originally designed for a three-month, one-hour storm before the system begins to back up and starts flooding roads and basement. The current design standards, just to put this in perspective, if we had to design a new storm sewer right now, it'd be done at a 10-year, 24-hour storm event. So you can see, you know, and we have a combined system out here, so not only do we have all the sewage flowing into the sewer, now on a big, heavy rain event, all that rain water that's going in there, and that's causing the basement floodings and the surface flooding in roads. The other thing that we want to address is sewer cleaning and lining to help increase the useful life of the existing sewer network on the lateral lines. So the 2024 DWF and CWF program timeline is shown here. As you can see, we submitted the intent to apply for it back in November of 2022. We advertised for the draft project plan comments on April 6. We started the 15-day public comment period beginning on April 7, and we're here today at a public hearing, resolution adoption on April 25, and the deadline for the project plan is May 1. So if the loan's approved, loan closing would take place. For drinking water, we're looking right now in March 2024, and clean water, approximately December 2023. So why the DWF and CWF? As I stated earlier, low-interest loans. But also, the one thing that we really want to emphasize is going after and applying for these SRF loans had given us grant money in the past. So 2022, we received the $3 million lead service line grant. 2023, because we moved a project from '22 into '23, we received $795,000 for the Prescott water main replacement. We also, in 2022, got the 30% water main replacement cost rent for the projects that we're currently working on right now. So in prior years, not all, not everything, not everyone that submits in a project plan gets funded. I think we're in pretty good shape with the city to, you know, we got projects, good projects out there. We are overburdened. I think we're going to rank high, as we have in previous years, to hopefully qualify for some of these other, some of these grants that are out there. So there's the ARP. I know there's a bipartisan loan also, so we're hoping that we can definitely capitalize on some of these grant, grant money that's out there. As far as, yeah, so clean, drinking water received about 280 project plans. Clean water received about 250, I'm sorry, applications, about 250 applications. Just because somebody put in an application doesn't mean they're turned in a project plan. A lot of people don't. So as far as projects, the drinking water will include lead service line replacement, the distribution system material investigation of the remaining locations, and six water main replacement projects for the city's capital improvement plan. So we have those shown here. So we have Goodson Street from Joseph Campo to Lumpkin, Casimir from Joseph Campo to Conant, Comer, Joseph Campo to Conant, Comstock, Galgier to Conant, Poland, Lumpkin to Dequinder, Belmont, Conant, Telphino. And then, the clean water SRF plan will include the Phase 1 sewer relief project. We also put in for Phase 2 sewer relief modeling, as well as cleaning and televising and lining program of the lateral sanitary sewer lines. So if we do nothing, we'll continue to experience water main breaks in some of the same areas we currently are having issues. This will add further disruption to your homes, businesses throughout the cities. These repairs can be costly in labor and man-hours by the DPW staff. We also would not be able to be in compliance with current lead and copper rules for lead service line replacement. If we do nothing with the sanitary sewer, we'll continue to have basement floodings and system backups causing flooding within your roads also. So this will also continue to cause disruption to service to residents and commercial properties, cause additional costly damages, and add man-hours required by the Department of Public Service Staff. So as far as proposed projects, we'll fulfill the lead and copper replacement requirement over the next two years, based on what we submitted for. Full cooperation with residents is needed to complete the waivers and provide access to their homes and our businesses. The water main replacement work will need to be funded through the DWF loan in order to qualify for any ARP grants. And then, the DSMI, did I say that one? And then, the DSMI is also the other one that we have down there. So as we move forward, summary costs. So as you can see here, for water main, the total projects of all three is $15,034,647. The total cost of all the clean water projects is $17,956,054. Again, all these projects have the possibility of the ARP grant. So for the total cost, including engineer, you know, the total cost for all these projects, that does include the engineering, construction inspection, construction QC testing. The maximum annual debt calculated for the loans, or for the drinking water, is $902,051. This would increase the user cost by approximately $155.74 a year, or $12.98 per month. For the clean water, the maximum annual debt is approximately $1,077,330. This would increase the user cost by approximately $186.12 a year, or $15.51 per month. So as far as social and environmental impacts, there are positive long-term impacts of the SRF loans by reducing water main breaks, improving the reliability of the system, as well as compliance with the lead and copper rules. Some of the positive long-term impacts of the clean water is to reduce the basement backups and surface flooding, and a more reliable sewer network within your city. Some of the negative impacts during construction is the temporary lane, the driveway closures, loss of water during construction, as well as the noise of construction equipment and stockpiles that contribute to dust in the area. So as far as next steps, as stated earlier, next step is to get the final project plan by Eagle on May 1, 2023, or by May 1, 2023, with expected project and rankings to be available. I'm thinking around August 2023, so we're always told, late summer. If the DWF loan is approved, we're looking at a loan closing date of March 2024 and to start construction in the spring 2024. If the clean water loan is approved, we're looking at a loan closing date of December 2023 and to start construction in early 2024. So at this time, I'd like to, we got to open it to public comment, correct?
Well, we already opened it.
Okay. So open the floor to questions.
So 2022, we got $3 million grant money, right? How much do you say to be used out of this?
So with $3 million for lead service line replacement. So we're currently still doing that. So we did some, we have a contractor under contract for that. So super construction, so they were in last year doing lead service line replacement. They'll be back this year to continue doing lead service line replacement under that
There's a lot going on.
In our city, no public.
Usually, you get a complaint from residents when you get to move their slab, doesn't put it on properly, and this would be a complaint from residents always. So just make sure, please, when you're working on it, make sure they replace all the slabs they're taking out from the front of their houses.
Yeah, sidewalks removed, sidewalks replaced. So that should, that should always be replaced, nothing's left open. We do have, I know at times there's.
People take too much time, maybe lingering too much to finish the work. That's just the complaint.
Oh, so last year, there was a concrete shortage, and that did delay some of the concrete work and sidewalk replacement. So we're hoping not to see that again, but that was all across the state.
Sometimes it's also DCE doing stuff, too, and we get blamed for it?
Yes, that's true, too.
If it's not properly installed, who should they complain, or who should they contact?
So when we give out the consent forms and the notices of construction, Charles Smith, our construction manager, his direct cell phone is always on that flyer, as well as our office number, to ask for me directly. We always also have an inspector on site, so they have three different means of contacting people. And if some, you know, usually, I have my office phone go directly to my cell phone. So I field calls all day long, if, you know, from residents.
Do you want the resident contact with you?
To contact Tennessee Engineers. So, yeah, one of the two numbers listed on the notice, and we'll definitely get back with them and address it.
We can, of course, also help them, too. I mean, if they come into the DPW, they can catch John, they can catch me, I mean, we'll get it on the way, you can see.
Many people, when they change the line, if they cover the cement, when they come to the rain, after that one, the water, they go straight up, close the line to the basement. It's still leaking.
You're saying after we remove?
When we move the old line, but the new line, the water, they come right the way straight up to the basement.
So the old line is leaking, you mean?
After.
Yeah.
Before, they didn't have to leave the line. When they change the new line, that line, when we cover the, from the sidewalk, the water is still leaking to any side.
Like through where we cut, or?
Yeah, from, through where we cut.
Okay.
So in the basement wall, or in the ground?
The ground, they come from the ground to any side of the basement, from the line to the new line.
Okay.
I have some couple people complain.
Well, if someone has.
I told them, before they did the cement, I told them, why, when they cement, maybe they're going to stop. And some of them, they call me back, they still have leaking.
Send them to us.
Yeah, we'll definitely have the contractor go look at that.
Okay.
Or I'll have an inspector go look at it right away.
I sent all three of them myself to go.
Do you see some real, because I sent people to come to you. Tell them, we give you the address, he can make inspection, because they show up when they have a rain.
Let's bring them to us, we'll get them served out. Okay. That's it?
Any other questions?
Close the hearing?
Can we close the hearing?
Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
We got a motion.
We got motion, I'll second.
Motion, El Samiri?
Yes, somebody motion.
7:24?
Yes.
Can we go ahead and vote?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-30 approved.
Thank you. We move to the new business. We have resolution 2023-57. Council authorize this and direct the city manager to apply for the, for the Protecting Michigan Pension Grant on behalf of the city of Hamtramck.
I make a motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is just a formality. In order for us to apply for the grant, we have to have council basically direct us to do it. So we've talked about this many times. This is the large grant that the state is funding the pensions with, and we just got to go through the motions to apply for it.
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 23-57 approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution 2022-58 approving allocation and utilization of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for payment of wages and benefits for the general fund effective July 1, 2022, for the city of Hamtramck. You got a motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is basically a tactical move to save us on audits, allocate the resources, essentially increase our fund balance. Brought forth by a mayor who recommended it, thought was an excellent idea. Move the money around.
All right. So we had a concern. Basically, we are just putting down the fund bonds, right?
Yep, that's all that's happening. It's taken, there's a lot of bureaucracy with using this that comes attached to it that causes administration a whole lot of extra headache and extra audits and all kinds of things. This is basically the simplest move to increase the fund balance, which then takes a lot of the strings away from it. It's not going anywhere.
I understand, but I thought that ARPA money is to, to the more constructive work, so more sort of public.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I just don't like that the word that is used here, the wages and benefits for the employees.
So, Councilman, it's literally just a tactical move. We're not spending the money as much as it's going into the fund balance of the city, which then means we can still use it for any project we need. It's not going anywhere at all. It's just saving us money in the long run on required audits for this and a whole bunch of bureaucracy that we would have had to jump through. With it going into the fund balance, it allows council to then budget and allocate it any way you want it.
Yeah, I just want to explain that there are a bunch of uses for ARPA funds, and there are certain nonuses for ARPA funds. The nonuses are.
Can you come up to the podium and to the cameras, and he can catch it because of that?
Okay, so there are multiple uses for ARPA fund. Over the years, the government has increased the type of uses that can be used for. What are the uses that we are using for is also out in the ARPA fund guidelines. In addition to that, you can use it for infrastructure, you can use it for, you know, building, new building, or, you know, invest in sewer and water. So, you know, a lot of activities. What the fund requires is that you don't use it for paying off your pension obligation. You don't use it for paying off any of your debt, you know, things like that. But those are very limited, you know, exclusions for use of fund. So this is, you know, this is a perfectly allowable use of fund. Whenever we use ARPA, it's not just any government grant, any federal grant that gets used to the amount of more than $750,000 in any year, you are then required to have a single audit as well. Okay? So if we spread this use over three years, or two years, well, we basically have now three years left in order to use this fund. So every year, we'll be having a single audit, you know. So what we have tried to do is utilize it in one go, in one year, so that we have one single audit, and we get over it. So there'll be, you know, fewer reporting requirements and things like that. When you go into utilizing the funds for infrastructure and any of those uses, you do have a lot of restrictions in terms of, you know, making sure that your use of fund is in line with the federal guidelines for, you know, use of these funds, which includes making sure that, you know, you bid out these projects, you bid out parties which are federally approved, you know. So there are a lot of paperwork and a lot of, you know, things that we need to be careful about.
Our hope is to use the fund balance eventually to build the DPW building that has been discussed.
Can you spend some money for this council chamber? Make it a little bit more modernized, maybe, for those grants.
We are certainly open to suggestions on that topic.
Yes.
Well, more so, my concern is that this is the one-time payment we receive. You know, we don't get this ARPA money.
We're not losing it, Councilman.
No, I know we're not losing it, but look, my intention is to give back to the community, put it back to where we needed to utilize it, okay? This is $2,269,811. We don't get that every very often. In the city of Hamtramck, the poorest city in metro Detroit or in Michigan, we could use that money to improve our infrastructure, our roads, our alleyways, you know, parks and preservations, all those things. I just don't want it, even, you know, if dollars, I don't want to.
Councilman, the money, you're not losing whatsoever. It's, your fund balance can be used for that.
What if the fund balance become a deficit, and then somewhere there's short of money, and then you're going to start using that?
We only have so long to allocate it, and it kind of needs to get going, so, I mean.
I understand. He explained very well. He really explained clearly to every one of us that, you know, where he's going to go, and you're trying to cut down the future audit and all the things.
We have, we have very little time left to allocate these funds.
Why do you wait for last minute, though?
It's not really wait for last minute.
I don't think it's wait for last minute. I think it's something.
We've been planning pretty much since we took administration to use it. and our hope was to construct the DPW building from it. That was my hope at least. If council wants a different plan for it, obviously that's what will happen, but, I mean, things can only move so fast, and we've had it for a while.
Especially for infrastructure projects, you require a long, you know, it takes, it's a longer process. You have to do the planning, you have to then do the, get the approvals, you then have to go for bidding, you then have to, you know, start with the work, and then you have to finish the work. So that is going to take longer.
So do you have any idea how much it'll cost for DPW?
Not right now, they're still working, they're still working on the planning part of it.
Silver billion at least.
When I was, last year, I asked about that money, you know, our money that we receive, and how we're going to utilize it, and I was told that my impression was this money will be put back to the alleyway project, roads and other.
We are using, we are using general funds.
That we are going to implement.
We are using general fund to do the alleyway projects every year. This year as well as next year, we have kept half a million dollars for alleyway projects. So that's a million dollar already used.
In addition or sinking brands and loans as well.
So the key is that whatever money is being used in the general fund, it is for the community, it is not for somebody's personal use, or it's not for projects which are going waste. For example, we are buying the sweeper of three hundred and thirty thousand that, you know.
From the general fund.
So that's again from general fund.
Yeah, so the replacement for this, with this money.
Yeah, I mean, anything, you know, we are buying police cars, you know, all of these have to be, you know, a perfectly good use of funds. So what I'm saying is that whatever money that the general fund uses, it is for the benefit of the city. It's not like money that gets wasted.
So sure, we don't waste our money, the taxpayer money. Sometimes we do not follow up, we, it's like, I'm here on the councils, sitting here today. I may not be sitting here next year, so new council members not know what's going on with their money, where it was allocated, then you guys can come up with the different ideas to just, I'm not saying that, you know, that, you know, your Benish worry will be gone, but somehow this money will not be used properly if the new council members come in and not knowing what's going on, you know, that's, that's my afraid of, but my goal and intention is to make sure this, any money that's coming to the city, we properly use it for the benefit of the community.
Absolutely, that's what I feel.
Our general fund, our revenue, share revenue from the state isn't enough to cover all the, all the construction, all the things that we need. We have hundreds of alleys, hundreds of streets that need to be repaired, and this is just a small amount, and I'd like to make sure use that properly.
So that's what we're doing, we are using it. Like I said, just in two years, this year and the next year, we'll spend a million dollars on just alleyways, nothing else, just alleyways. So if we, if we extend it to another couple of years, you are, this money is gone there.
It's gonna be more than that.
Yeah, so that's what I'm thinking, that we are already using it in the general fund.
I'm sure something related, we didn't plan for this year, this summer or next year, how many alleys we're fixing?
We're working on the numbers, we're actually gonna start seeing some alleys be done.
Not just the number, we have the name of this alley, because they're asking us, they're asking.
We will, we will have the numbers as well as the names.
The next two.
That's what Hennessy is working on right now.
The next two will be the north Kniff Alley just west of Joseph Campo, and then the west Joseph Campo Alley just north of Kniff, behind the couple mosques. Those are the next two to go in, and then we're working the details on the next group after that. But it's all happening, there's gonna be a lot going this summer. I could certainly, councilman, if you want some input into where we go next, we are trying to do it by need, obviously, you know, trying to do the worst in the ones that have the greatest impact on our community. But, you know, we certainly, if mayor and council decide they wanna specific alley for a specific reason that we may not be aware of, we'll certainly try to fit that in where we need it. But rest assured, councilman, that, and councilman Chaudry, mayor and council have final say in any money that's spent, so, I mean, we're just tactically handling it right now so that, basically, you have the ability to spend it how you want to, see fit for the city, but it's definitely not gonna get wasted. Our hope, our hope as the administration is to spend it on large projects for the benefit of the city, but whatever that project is, is going to be your call. I mean, we don't, we're not, certainly not wasting it.
No, sure, it's not going to be wasting, it's just that it wouldn't be acknowledged, it wouldn't be like known, by known to be used, like, you can just say, come up with something that this money was sent to fund balance, general fund, and then the numbers will mix up, and then we know that's two hundred, two million, two million, two hundred sixty-nine thousand is gone.
It's not gonna disappear.
It would be gone, it would be like you.
Lost in the mix.
Lost in the mix.
I see what you're saying.
Then we wouldn't be really tracking down every single thing you guys doing. Some stuff, you know, you were, you're managing the money, you're coming up with this stuff. We, as the council, I speak for myself, I don't day-to-day look at your stuff. I don't nitpick and scurrilous and doing this and that. You know, whatever comes to the council or before the council, we look at it and try to understand in better perspective, and then we put our best perspective to understand and get the city going. Day-to-day operation you're utilizing, if you do not be a fiduciary with the due diligence and then try to fix the right way, that, the money will get lost. That's my, you know, opinion.
I believe what the councilman is saying is that he wants to make sure the recognition for the money we received for the grant is still credited for it. I think that's what you're saying?
Correct.
And we can certainly point that out with whatever infrastructure project ultimately happens.
The thing is, the money will be utilized for what is being said to be utilized. What it'll do is, it will increase your fund balance, and when you increase your fund balance, that amount can be utilized for whatever project, whatever project you wanna do.
Okay, so the hope was to use it as a match, if we get grants, we can match and get more money. Can we still use it?
No, the thing is, well, yeah.
Yeah, theoretically, yes, you can use it for anything you want.
Theoretically, yes, but I think there are certain restrictions on matching as well.
The way it sits right now.
Even in the rules, so I think this, this way it gives us a lot more flexibility into how we wanna use it.
Yeah, so if a grant presents itself that requires a match, for example, we may or may not be able to do that right now with the way it sits as far as allocation purposes. If it pays for this stuff, and then essentially the fund balance increases, it's now sitting in the fund balance without so much restrictions on it, which now we can match that grant. It gives us more ability to use it. You got it, right on, yeah, hit it right on the nose.
That's the.
And I guess the council approves the budget, so since you guys are the ones that are choosing what to spend it on, they can't play with it as much as you think they can, like, they can't really get lost in the mix because the council chooses what they spend it on.
Right, I'll narrow this down to this, that would you be able to give us briefly whenever we utilize this money, will we have an accountancy?
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Again, depends on how we, what we decided on, whatever the council approves. Okay, we wanna build a hospital, for example, or we wanna buy fire engines. You'll have that money and then we can account for it. What you need is an accountability for two point two six nine million, right? You will get that accountability.
So councilman asking probably like, we day-to-day basically uses, you know, I know the way this money used.
Right.
Update, update every.
If we use it, if we use it. What we are planning, or at least that's what I had in mind, and Max also had in mind, was to use it in one go for one major initiative, or two major initiatives. You know, not just use it for every day, you know, like.
No.
Paying a big project.
Yeah, big project, not like paying utility bills or, you know, something else.
That's what I'm saying.
No, that's.
It's totally off by looking at the ways and benefits for the employee, that's what.
Exactly, that threw me off.
Just a tactical move, councilman.
I see that, but it's, it's like, I'm trying to get more money as much as I could. My hope, my prayer is to this city to bring more money, to bring this city in flourish, to bring this city back to this, like, we can make the better cities, communities and better cities, you know. The potholes are everywhere, and it's, alleys, you can't even drive through alleys. I, it's even like, I always say, it's like off-road, I'm living in a third world country, you know. That's how, when you go through the alley, but we're not. We, all this taxpayer money we collect and everything, so we're trying to slowly move this big ship to the better.
Well, we are allocating in the general fund specifically for that. In addition, we're seeking every possible grant avenue we can. I literally just got updates from at least one state legislator that he's trying to get us funds for alleys right now, and one federal legislator is trying to do that exact thing right now. Serious chance we might get it.
I tried to explore the option of utilizing the Act Fifty-One revenues for alleys. And the Act Fifty-One specifically disallows the use of Act Fifty-One funds for alleys. It only allows use of Act Fifty-One money for major roads and local streets. Now, if you rename an alley into a local street, you can suddenly start using that money, but that's just.
Another.
Another thing. What I'm trying to say is, we've been trying to look for, you know, revenue sources to fix the alleys and do as much as possible.
It seems, it's, we discussed, started discussing, we brought up so many ideas and so many things, and then we got a lot of.
Trust, trust me, we are constantly working on, on all of these issues.
We see that you're working hard. Okay, I'm done with that, anyone else, but I just wanted to, you know.
You just, you just apply for five million grand for the alleys. From the municipal transportation.
I pray every day, so if we get approved for that. I'll tell you folks, I get the residents come through my business, and as well as mosque, okay? Can you look at my alley, can you come drive through my alley, can you, when are you gonna fix the alley? My kids or us, we scared to go through the alley. So you hear them every day, and I feel like I should just spend my own money, but I don't have that ability to fix that, it's like eighty, ninety thousand dollars.
Council, if you wanna sponsor an alley, we'll fight one.
The issue, we have a small community, probably find us everywhere. If you go to mosque, if you go to your store, everybody get always whining, complaining. Not complaining and whining, I'm just, I'm sorry, go where I'm using, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they live there, so they feel like their alley is where we take our trash can, you know, and things, and then they see this big pothole or, you know, sinkhole, it's going down, and they don't know if they're gonna have their backyard anymore, you know, that's stuff like that.
Our goal is.
But you know, if I need a lottery, I would, I would definitely give you two.
It's on record.
Okay.
Play the lottery?
If you hear a lottery.
Council, I'll even leave a charge to help you name it after you.
Now, everybody they speak from the black alley, commercial alley. I speak for this idea from two thousand nineteen, nobody speak for that one. And I keep to work, people they accept my idea, we start working from two thousand nineteen. In two thousand twenty, they start working, and we bring fund from the state, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two. Now, everybody they speak from the black alley.
There's, there's a lot of alleys, and we've done.
Nobody speak for that one, guess me, from two thousand eighteen, nineteen.
We're gonna be paving alleys for a while.
And I keep to fight everyone from the state, we bring money to fix that one.
All right, we have some election debate coming soon.
Yes, yeah, they're gonna come, it's gonna come, everybody they gonna show up.
All right.
Don't debate at worthless, sir, just say that.
So any more discussion on this one?
Vote? Councilman Chaudry?
Oh, put me on the spot, it's okay. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Ruhwood?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty-two-three fifty-eight approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution twenty-two-three dash fifty-nine granting Eid al-Fath and Eid al-Othah as city recognized holidays.
I make the motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do. All right, so this is brought forwarded by Councilman Muhyid Mahmud. So what, this is such a great idea, thank you very much, first of all. Second of all, are you trying to have the Eid al-Fath day off? Or you're trying to recognize it as we did in the past?
Day off, for city.
It's a day off, I think since we have a majority of Muslim in the community, we also, I know there's extra day off for the people that are not Muslim, not celebrating Eid, but, you know, since we could have asked for, just for those people to take a day off, but it's not fair for other people to work, so just have one day off for everyone, let's celebrate, you know, our holidays, now those are one of the biggest holiday like Christmas and other holiday that we celebrate.
Councilman, if I might add, many of our staff have indicated their thanks over this, our Muslim staff, of course.
So with the day off, with Eid?
Of course, it does regulate.
To be there every holiday? Because I thought, I have an email from the state legislator, as you know probably, our state representative, Abraham Maesh, is working on that, to have the state of Michigan.
So you have to help him, let's close ourselves.
It's in the, in the house right now that he's working on it, so the state of Michigan, including the schools, to have day off.
We can send him a copy.
So, councilman, we're starting from here, I hope it's became a federal holiday for our country, because we have so many Muslim growing in this country.
Right.
And all the school has, I mean, if you go to anywhere in Michigan, there's a majority, not Mediterranean, there's kids and Muslims, so I hope this became a.
There are already schools in.
Some schools, not all.
Who give holidays on Eid.
Right, right.
And that's biggest city like New York, the.
In Michigan.
I'm saying the biggest city, other cities are doing it.
It's a great idea, most of people are resident in Hamtramck, both religious, we celebrate Eid, so let's do. One thing's a little bit conflict of timing, Eid al-Fath are sometimes split at two days, so how do we do it this time?
We go by calculation.
I'll do the calculation. We can sawmose on the side.
That might be a little logistics to work out.
No, there are some groups here who follow other countries, we can't go by that. Some people will use the same day that Saudi will use, or Iran, or Iraq, why do we have to do that? We have our own country, and science now is, you know, widely used, so we go by calculation.
It's a small group you're talking about.
It's very accurate, I mean.
And secondly, I was just to you, put at least weeks ago, put down a big people notes, so we are closing this certain days, so at least people are not prepared to come in there one day if the city is off.
And that's what we did this time, we decided that Eid is Friday ahead of time, and everybody announced the day before that it's Friday.
Trust me, a day off, that news spreads real fast.
Legally speaking, I think the mayor's idea is the most prudent, by going with the calculations.
That's good.
I don't think we could have a problem.
Also, councilman, now if we do it permanently, so city manager know ahead of time, this year we just suddenly make the decision, those like, couple days, few days, you make the announcement, but we make the announcement, for next Eid, he knows that there is a holiday coming up, and, you know, he will find it, he'll make the announcement at least middle of Ramadan or maybe in the beginning of Ramadan.
Well, I think most of the, as far as Eid al-Fath is concerned, the mosque generally decide, you know, first or second week of Ramadan.
That's right, so we'll be able to make the announcement.
Eid al-Othah is going to be even easier because of the tenth of, so you will know ten days ahead of time when it's going to be, yeah, so it's not an issue.
All right, so, can we vote?
Councilman Ruhwood?
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty-two-three fifty-nine approved.
Thank you. Next one and the last one is resolution twenty-two-three.
Next one and the last one is Resolution 2023-60, approving process of new vehicle for code enforcement. I make a motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Redkey, our code enforcement officer, or supervisor is here. He was very thrifty on this. He actually had a much larger budget for this and found a vehicle fourteen thousand dollars underneath what he had budgeted for. They're in desperate need of cars for that unit, and I actually approve it for him.
How much was it?
Twenty seven.
Twenty-two thousand two hundred and seven dollars. And I was budgeted thirty-six, so I saved just under fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand. Is this for one vehicle or?
Yes, sir.
One vehicle?
Come on, council.
No, you know, you can.
You can buy one, get one free, it's not okay.
I tried to get a Corvette.
They, they could use it. I know they could use more than one, that's what.
Oh, you're saying like one function?
One function of.
Well, there's a lot, we could, we could.
I see them around everywhere, so you like, you see one car all the time. So I'm thinking, I'm thinking you're probably multiplying.
No, we're rotating them out, but I mean, we, we are definitely in need.
Okay.
Twenty-two thousand two hundred and seven.
It's a good price.
In this market, it's a good price.
Oh, the cars are expensive now.
Yeah.
It's, used cars.
Mr. Redkey was very thrifty on this.
All right, Mr. Redkey. It's been around for a long time, how's your health?
Hang it in there. I'm here.
Because I know about you. All right.
All right.
Thank you. Councilman Al Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-60 approved.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we move to the reports. Um, I'll start with my report. I don't have much to say. Some of the activities we did over the past two weeks were sending some charity events, some Eid celebration events. Um, we celebrated Eid with the family. The weather wasn't all that, it was raining, went out with the kids. It was fun for the past three days. Um, now we are, I wanna take this opportunity first, as I promised, Councilman Chaudry, thank you for coming today despite of the commitment that you had, because we wouldn't have a quorum without you coming today. So thanks for changing your plans and coming here. We've been suffering, you know, having a quorum because of, you know, absence of some councilmen and the fact that there, some of them are busy. So I don't know, what are the updates with the ones who are not here? When, when are they coming back? Maybe next month, I don't know. We'll find out. Um, but again, thank you for coming and, uh, just wanna, I'm happy for you guys to have the honor to go to the White House next week. Uh, hopefully, we get the last invitation for Councilman Abu Musa. Uh, it's still missing somewhere. We got, we got Councilman Muhyid Mahmoud finally, today, right? Was it, did you receive it today or last night?
It came yesterday, I believe, I'd sent today, I have some issue with the email, so we fixed it today.
All right, so that's good. Hopefully, we get Abu Musa's invitation soon.
Yes.
And we'll go there to represent Hamtramck.
Good. Bring some funds to Iraq.
Bring some pictures.
That's the whole.
Well, other than that, I don't have anything else to say. Short report. And report of Mayor Fortem, he's not here. City council reports, anyone wants to speak, feel free to talk.
Well, today, this week is the administrative professional week. I just wanna congratulate and thank you all, administrative professionals for the city of Hamtramck for your hard work and dedication. I hope your work's gonna, you know, take the city further more and to save the in and out. And thank you all for keeping up, for keeping us, keeping up with us all those holidays for Ramadan. You know, it was not easy for us, but you guys, you know, changed the timing, coming in one week, one hour early, and I know we are able to manage everything properly. So, and thank you, everyone. And as Mr. Mayor said, we're going to White House, you know, we'll bring some pictures for you guys and, you know, next meeting will get updated, what is called the report. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, thank you very much again. We just finished our Eid al-Fitr Eid節work to residents, citizens, city of Hamtramck, and all over the world. Uh, one thing I'd like to share with you guys, last 10 days, we released the meter, parking meter for the Justin Camp. Businessmen and residents enjoy this, actually, it's really, really helpful for them. They grow a lot of business at the time. And one thing I'd like to go over with you, police chief and some other people, police chiefs and city manager also, before the Eid, two days ago, three days ago, something happened in Conant. Somebody pulled the gun into the cars, maybe you get the complaints for those things. We suggested this time, people are shopping until one o'clock at night, a lot of people on the street. So please get a little bit more petrol around the side to make it safe and secure our community and our residents.
Yes, just so you know that I always remind them every year, just before Ramadan, that they, they will see increased activity later at night and to make sure that they're patrolling around the shopping districts for the restaurants and things like that, so. You know, unfortunately, crime is happening, but I can tell you our detectives are very hard at work, and hopefully we'll have an update on, on a recent robbery and carjacking. We're hoping to have an update soon, and I'll send it to the city manager for you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Police Chief, can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
Do you have any idea or update about the camera that we were planning to install in different areas for?
Oh, yeah, sure. I just actually took that to the city manager today, that I'm going to have a presentation at the end of May. They were not available for the next council meeting, but the May 23 council meeting, we hope to have a company come in and they will give you a presentation on the license plate reader cameras that we had discussed earlier. So it is coming, and I can just let the city manager know that we're available. So they'll give you a presentation, kind of explain to you what it is, and a lot of misconceptions of what it isn't. What people seem to think that, you know, we're, we're getting all their information and we're facial recognition and all that, they're, they're gonna put a stop to all those misinformation, and they will give you some real good information, and hopefully we'll have something for you if that's what you decide to do to move forward with that project.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We really need something because our crime's going higher in a day by day. I was always listening, hearing something in hijacking or this and that happening. So somehow we need to keep it controlled, and since we are shore in on our police officers, somehow we need to have our city on monitor to watch.
Yes, absolutely.
Do you wanna tell them about the technology and the car cameras with the readers?
Yeah, so we're actually looking at some other things. There's gonna be some new in-car camera systems that we're gonna be bringing up proposal to you eventually. Unfortunately, they're in some production issues right now because it's such a huge system that everyone wants now, because they do have license plate readers on those cameras. So they literally, as officers are driving around, will just run license plates and send them. They, all they'll do is send them alerts as if the vehicle's stolen, if it's a wanted vehicle, someone has warrants, things like that. So it's not gonna tell you if someone's suspended or licensed or anything like that. It's gonna give you real information on, on crimes that, that vehicle might be wanted in. So that will be some really good technology as well that we're gonna bring, hopefully, soon.
We're working on all the latest and greatest goodies.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Definitely, anything we can do to, to fight crime and keep the community safe.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so now just say a few words and then make it quick. All right, thank you so much, everyone, for being here tonight. And we just celebrated our Eid al-Fitr and again Eid Mubarak. The blessing, it was a blessing month for Muslim communities. We enjoyed a lot of the foods and lots of gathering with the Labans. I wanted to also thank our administration for working the professional, was it, professional week?
Yes.
Administration.
Administrative.
Administrative professional week. Uh, yes, I, I see the things are improving in the city administration. Communications, professionalism, due diligence, working hard and try to fix things, you know? I appreciate you guys so much. I know you go beyond, above and beyond sometime, you know, our ways, you fix things up to help the communities or the residents. I appreciate that. And we're going to Washington, pray for us, maybe we'll bring more money to city of Hamtramck, you know?
Sure.
Yeah, that, that will help. Definitely, the city of Hamtramck needs financial strength to, to fix this. It's been left a lot of things unfinished, you know? I, I've been in the city twenty-plus years and things are not, things should have been fixed, but it wasn't for, due to financially crisis or whatnot. But now going forward, we need to start flourishing. We start working on this to bring the city back. The residents deserve it, you know, as you know. So that's my goals, my intentions to, to rejuvenate the city. We talk about the vilification, but we're not really act on it. We do not bring the money, the fun, money to fix. We are applying for grants and stuff, this is good stuff. And we are all on the same page, we have a great intentions to do best we can. And as you guys know, I put my nominating for reelection, city council, so I'll be up and running again. So I hope I receive your support so I can continuously do my due diligence and my best of ability to serve the communities. That's all, thank you.
Do you really start campaign?
Well, it's ended today, you know, the, the thing. Hopefully, we'll have a closed session with President Biden. I'll make sure he endorsed me. That'll be in a dream.
Never forget.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, thank you, and we have a report for the city manager?
Uh, just a reminder that I spoke about in the beginning. I'm kind of mixing the community now to my report at this point. But again, merchants meeting on May 11th from 7:00 to 9:00 at the historical museum on Joseph Campo. In addition, I would request on your trip to Washington to get a very nice, high-quality photo so we can add it to the wall of president's photos out here, since the last one is from the 70s with Mrs. Wallach. That's it.
Okay. Keep that in mind.
We have a closed session.
But we still have the public comment first.
Oh, sorry.
And controller doesn't wanna speak? You're good?
I'm good.
No question? That's good. Okay, Mr. Mayor, no public comment. Carry on.
She goes quick, that's good.
Wow.
This, this is a once in a lifetime.
Sometimes you came, sometimes you came, but they don't like it either.
Oh, really?
I wonder what happened.
We take many time.
We just said no public comment, why are we still?
I keep on wondering if we should send a research party for a few people.
Khalid forget to send one.
Last call. Okay, so can we motion to begin closed session, please?
We're not closing.
Second.
Wait, who?
Motion to both.
Motion?
Begin the closed session.
Time is?
Eight oh six.
Everyone out. Everyone out, please.